Call the meeting to order. So, we need a approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. The approval of our regular session minutes for February twenty first, twenty twenty two. What was our minutes? I think we had a change on those minutes. I do have a change, I think, on the approval of the agenda, or on the minutes for February twenty first, twenty twenty two, on the approval agenda. I think I was the one that requested that the mask and policy be moved to discussion item F, and we have one of the minutes, it's Dr. Rice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we'll need to correct that. So, with the correction to the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as amended.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion agenda, item A, discussion of capital project update. Mr. Goins?
Yes, board members, in your packet you should have a list of the project updates this fiscal year. In going down those, we're still maintaining the fall protection, you can see there, we've almost spent almost forty-two thousand dollars this year. I'm gonna request more funds for, in next year's budget for that. Moving on down, the roofs for North Stokes and Piney Grove, we met with the engineer last Friday to finalize what we need to do there, so he's working on the bid packet to get that out. Again, anything that's highlighted in yellow has been completed. The schools, they're still scheduling their hardwood floors, and most of those do theirs when, a lot of them do it when it's, uh, the end of the year, during the summer break. The burner for Mount Olive, it's been awarded, the submittals have been approved by the engineer, so those parts are on order for that. Number nine, the heating for South Stokes F Building. We estimated that of putting in mini splits, we had an engineer to come out and look at that with CES. He recommended that we go with these barred, wall hung units. To, and to do that at that school, instead of forty-five thousand, he said it's gonna be anywhere between four hundred and four hundred and fifty thousand.
So, what's the advantage?
Better heating options, because we were just looking at classrooms, he's putting heat and air in the hallways, in other words, just abandoning the system we have in place now. Because what it is, it's called perimeter heat. It's never been a, a good system. Even when it was new, they've never worked right, same thing we have at Mount Olive, London, and one, one building at London, they, they just don't work good. But I thought that was kinda extreme, the cost on that, and he was comparing that to a job they just bid out at, in Surrey County Schools, to give us that budget number.
So, would the mini splits work?
Yes, but not as well as the wall hung.
Was, was, was currently installed?
Well, that's what we have, is what they call the perimeter heating system. It's like two systems in one. You have a heating system that's just around the outside wall that delivers heat, and then your air conditioning is a separate system off of VAVs in the center. And it's supposed, you're supposed to let the fan run on the air conditioner year round to kinda mix the air, but we have to cut it off, if you don't, you'll just freeze to death, because it, and it's still cold in there anyway. It's just a, it's just an odd system, they just don't work good. We've had contractors come out and look at it, and it's just, it's just doing all it can do. It's just a bad design.
Mind if I speak a little bit there?
Yes, go ahead.
I can back him up on that, the skin heat is non-existent, it's useless. As far as mini splits, you're gonna be looking at thirty-two to forty thousand dollars a piece, or the bids that they're getting in Winston-Salem right now for mini splits. And the barred units actually bring in outside air and stuff, so you get better air change, air quality and stuff, so it's really a better system.
But now we're four hundred thousand dollars over the budget.
Yeah, that's, that's the only problem I've got with it.
How many rooms are in that school?
Six.
Six.
In that building, not that school.
Yeah, I mean, in that building.
There's six classrooms, then you have a workroom, and two restrooms and a lobby.
So, you're gonna have to do...
Square footage? Square footage?
I don't know right off the top of my head.
Yeah, it just seems extreme.
What does the F Building house?
Which one, which is the F Building, that's what I'm trying to figure out at South.
It's the odd building, when you come around the corner coming into South Stokes, the first building you come to, that doesn't match the rest of the buildings, that's F Building.
What kind of air conditioning is in it now? Being you had the VAV boxes, is it, uh, central air, I mean, one central rooftop unit?
One central, well, it's not rooftop, but it was air handler, but one central air handler with the conditioning unit, split system.
Is there any way we could add heat, change that one unit out and add heat?
We looked at an option on that, but then it's all or nothing, you either get all air or all heat. For all the classrooms, you won't have individual control over the classrooms.
Well, do all of our other schools have individual control, or do most of them have?
The majority of them do. Uh, the majority of our schools have individual controls. Even at West Stokes, where you have one big air handler, you do have a VAV box that, uh, does reheat.
Right.
That controls the classroom.
Yeah, that's the reason I was asking, because I knew you'd mentioned the VAV boxes and all. Because look like me with that damper in the VAV box, it could just, if you didn't need air, it could just shut it off.
And tha, and that's what it, that's what it would do, you'd either have to call for a hundred percent heat or a hundred percent air, and if the other one didn't need it, it would just shut it off. So, the other, you know, it just won't be an individual control for each classroom.
What was the forty-five thousand dollar original estimate based on?
We, we guessed, estimated that on putting mini splits in, just putting a mini split in each classroom. But everything, materials, we gotta know everything's gone outrageous.
And what'd you say their?
He's saying thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty to thirty-two.
They bid, they figured sixteen thousand per mini split, and knowing that that right there should do two each, you know, seven, eight thousand dollars or do a mini split, all jokes aside. The bids, the low bid was thirty-two thousand, some, the high bid was thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand per unit.
And a unit will do two classrooms?
One.
One.
It just jumped up and cost that much.
So, even that's going from forty-five to a hundred and eighty thousand.
Which is still half of what?
But that's half of the four hundred thousand.
Correct.
On a building that fifty-six years old?
That building's not that old. It's newer.
Or the school that's that old?
School's that old, correct. That's one of the newer buildings, but I don't have that information.
I wonder if we can use newer when it's probably still forty. It's like saying...
It's over thirty-two, I can tell you that.
It's like saying I'm a young guy.
Is this the one closest to the baseball field?
Closest to the spirit rock as you drive?
Yes, yeah, the one closest to the spirit rock when you first come in.
So, the auto?
To the entrance.
First one you see when you get there.
Okay. Math building, okay, I know it by subject.
Eighty-six, eighty-six, okay. Eighty-six hundred square feet.
To me, it sounded like the mini splits is still the cost effective option.
Well, it still sounds like it's high for mini splits to me.
Extremely high.
Many, it's not much to a mini split to have it for thirty, thirty-something thousand, that's crazy.
And how we're gonna bring in outside air with the mini splits?
You don't.
Exactly, that's my point. So, we're gonna have to still figure out a way to bring in outside air, because you have to have so much air change per person, an hour.
I thought he had said there was a central air system, but...
That's part of the air conditioning system, and it, and it brings in outside air when it's running.
Yeah, so, you're gonna have to just run it twenty-four seven just to bring in air.
Yeah.
That's the reason I was asking about maybe, you know, changing it to a heat source and reusing the same ductwork.
So, you don't think you can go with a central system, even though if they don't have a, what if they just have the thermostat in each room for the damper, a damper control system at, uh...
We, we could do that, uh, but, you know, people, they need to, we have the same situation at King now, where you don't have any individual control, they just kinda have to get used to the system.
Yeah.
Well, even with individual control, they don't have a ton of individual control because of Johnson Controls, correct?
Yes, but it's better than what they have at King and Germanton, where you have, like, King Elementary, their primary building has three thermostats in it. And then we put the doors and walls, it's just, it's, they just have to live with it.
So, at, at South, if we do the central system and then have, uh, 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 damper controls, where I guess they have a thermostat, they could control the damper, either turn the air on or turn it off, basically.
Yeah.
What, what would a system, what would, what would we have in a system like that, what would that cost?
I, I'd be afraid to guess at that now, I would, I can get back with our engineer, because I told him I was gonna present this to the board to see what option, because the way prices are changing now. He even told me this number, he said, you know, that's what we're doing now, he said, six months from now, he said, I don't know what it'll be.
Yeah, well, I think for this much difference in the cost from what we had budgeted at forty-five to go up to four, potentially four fifty, uh, I'm, I would say, let's go back and explore some more options.
Just look for some more cost effective options.
Yeah.
I'll talk with an engineer about that.
Yeah, let's don't make a decision on that now, let's explore some more options and try to figure out a way that we can, you know, we can get, that number's gotta come down.
Okay.
Was the existing system failing?
Yes, it just, it just doesn't work right, the, even...
Does it work in different than it did ten years ago? I'm not saying it was ever right, I'm just wondering, is it something we can kinda react on?
We, we have to run it twenty-four seven and try to maintain heat, and if it was, the wind was blowing like it is now, if it was cold outside of that building, we would probably be in the sixties, low sixties. It just, it just won't heat, it won't keep up.
Sad part is you'll have one room, maybe on the whole system, on each side of the building, that it'll actually heat.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, moving on, the, the monitoring system for child infrastructure, Mr. Brown is looking over that, uh, the good thing about that, the one we would recommend is the same system he used in Winston-Salem for South County Schools. So, we're hoping to, to get that installed here shortly. Maintenance vehicles, uh, still no word on who we're gonna get those. Fire alarm panel, I'm waiting on the contractor for that one, uh, for Piney Grove. The freezer at South Stokes, we have it ready to bid. All the, we have the plans and everything, all that's approved, we're just trying to get, we're working on capital budget for next year now, so we're hoping to get that done in the next few weeks. South Stokes, uh, uh, project for the Autotech, we're having the pre-bid on that, uh, this week, March the tenth. As you can see, the next projects, they're complete. Moving on, London Elementary, number nineteen, uh, we're gonna do that when the school is out, same with King Elementary. Then, I know the yellow buses, and talking with Mr. Tetter, and they haven't been converted yet. Number twenty-eight, the restrooms for the cafeteria in London, we're planning on working out over the summer break. The cafeteria tables. Mr. Brown, we're trying to get a list together where we can just do one school, uh, replace one school, uh, instead of buying the onesies and twosies, because we get a better bang for our buck. If you start buying the onesies and twosies for school, you spend all your, about half your money just in shipping. So, we're hoping to just do one school there. Track replacement, uh, I'm waiting to hear back from the engineer, uh, when he's gonna do, we're hoping to do the pre-bid there just any day now. The maintenance upgrades, we've got all the information off the equipment, and I've gotta get that to the engineer to, uh, to get his recommendations.
Where is that at?
Number thirty-one.
I mean, for the maintenance department there?
Yeah, number thirty-one.
Behind London, okay.
Well, what they're doing there, they're looking at all, what that was for, is to look at all our equipment in the school system.
Okay.
And we went around to save money, we met him the same day we met at South Stokes, we needed the, the model number and shoe number of all our equipment. And they're gonna go through, look at the age, kinda give us the life cycle of the equipment, and see where we're at on that.
Question, on the track replacement for, uh, North Stokes, says to start June the first, uh, does anybody know what plans they have for graduation? Uh, graduation takes place after that, right?
Well...
He's talking about starting after graduation.
It's after, it'll be after graduation.
Graduation will be on Thursday, they'll be in there the next week.
Okay.
And he's actually went, their first two games is away.
For next year.
Yeah, they did that to give us more time in the fall in case we run into some issues, but it, it will start after graduation. Number thirty-eight, the drainage at Nancy Reynolds, what we had planned on doing there was putting a French drain in with a gravel, but after we had everything located, there's power lines and water lines in this area that's real shallow. What we're looking at, and this is just between the pavement and the fence on the playground, so another alternative we're gonna look at is putting a, pouring concrete and having a slope off with the concrete to get the drainage off the pavement, because we can't put the French drain in, because everything else is so shallow. She's looking down at the carryover projects, uh, we're still waiting for them to start, uh, Nancy Reynolds, we're hoping that they start sometime this month, that was the last date we've got on the, the company doesn't wanna start until they have all materials on hand. They don't wanna start on a promised delivery date, because I think that's burning them on a few roofs, so they're gonna get everything on hand before they start. The owning at Chestnut Grove, uh, they actually gonna deliver the materials for that tomorrow, tomorrow morning, and so we'll get, it was located last week. Uh, the Ursa funding, uh, we hadn't done anything with the ionization, window replacement. The water coolers, I put that out for bid last week, and the bid opening is scheduled for March the, the twenty-fifth on the, uh, the touchless and, uh, water spouts. As far as putting the water coolers back in place, uh, we're gonna start that this week, who was gonna start it sooner, but the chlorine test kits that we had, the, uh, packets that you test the chlorine with was out of date. So, in talking with our Pace Labs, the, the kit we had is a lot, is a lot more accurate, but I told them what we were doing, so we ordered some strips, so it's gonna be a lot faster. You can just test it and give it a few seconds and, and color code it off the bottle. It's gonna be a lot faster for what we're doing than the test kit, having to fill two bottles, put the packet in, give it so many minutes to react, and do a color code, it takes you about five minutes to do a test. So, we, they, those came in last Thursday, so we're planning on starting that this week. Any questions?
On the roof at, uh, London Elementary, it's got a mount budgeted seventy thousand, then cost one ninety-seven.
Which number are you on?
Uh, number one on carryover projects. And then it says four fifteen was the original budget amount, seventy was the carryover amount to complete the project. Was...
The London roof?
Yeah. Was it, basically, I'm asking, was it four hundred and eighty-five thousand or six hundred and twelve thousand total?
When we get the, we get these numbers, we use the, the square footage cost that the engineer from DPI gave us. And the budget number was four hundred and fifteen thousand.
Right.
And then when we bid it out, the, uh, it was, the cost was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Okay, that was total cost.
That was the total cost of the project.
Okay, so we had, I guess that seventy thousand was throwing me over, so... There were, it said, uh, the mount budgeted, and then said four hundred and fifteen, so did we, uh, budget four eighty-five total?
No, we budgeted four fifteen total.
Okay, I'll just try and get an idea of...
Okay.
And we came in two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars under budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got other projects, we don't know that.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goins.
I do have one point of clarification on that, the LES, number one, which school?
London.
It's LES London, because over here, I think, is London referenced, L-O-N-E-S.
That's probably just, yeah, which number are you looking at?
Number one on the carryover.
Then number nineteen, I think.
That's London Elementary School.
It is, okay, okay.
Normally London is L-O-N, and Los Angeles L-A-W, but this one's LES.
Okay, okay.
So, that was confusion.
Yeah.
We grew a school.
So, it wasn't just me, it's different.
Do we, do we have a, uh, do we have a, a run in total of, uh, what we spend in our capital projects this year, and, and, uh, maybe how much we have left over in the budget, is that a, Ms. Board question?
I don't have that with me, I'm sure we do, because I know I got the, the, the printout from Shannon, but I don't have that number with me. We can get that for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but we can get you where we are on that.
Yeah, I mean, we're getting fairly close to the end of the year now, end of our, end of our fiscal year, so, um, if we could, maybe shoot us an email and just let us know kinda where we are, and what we got left, and are we over, under? Kinda just keep us up to date on that. Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Goins. Uh, discussion item B, uh, discussion of summer programming. Uh, Mr. Sands?
Yes, Board, in, in your packet, you received eleven different plans from our elementary schools to deal with, although we don't use the word retesting, second opportunity for those students who are close in terms of meeting proficiency on EOGs, and so those eleven plans just outline how the schools would like to conduct that during the workdays. Understanding that these, this opportunity is optional, parents can opt in it or out of it if they wish to do so, and then, um, those results, any proficient students that we gain from that remediation and second chance testing, uh, does populate into our accountability measures for our proficiency, uh, for this school year. And so, basically, and we did have this same conversation, Mr. Rose and I had this conversation with middle and high school, and their, their wish was to primarily focus on the summer school that's gonna be offered to those students rather than this summer, um, second chance testing opportunities. So, I will offer any, if anyone has any questions about either one of these plans, or any of these plans.
So, you're saying, um, focus more on the summer school and retaining the information shared there versus just review and retest?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And that's for the middle and the high school wanting to do that, after much discussion, back and forth, whether they felt the benefit of, of trying to get those students and particularly thinking about, this would've been offered to students that was first semester and second semester, and many of those students have moved on, um, and, and so the school wanted to more focus on those that needed, you know, to regain those, those credits that they didn't get from the school year.
Right. Uh, I just had a question, um, now, the summer enrichment, um, that's different. What you're proposing here is just the testing at the end.
Yes, ma'am, that, that is separate from the summer school, this, this is basically, uh, I think most of the schools are doing five to seven hours from the last, uh, from the first teacher workday after school is out through that last teacher workday, so no, no teachers would be working beyond the workdays, and, and students will be brought in during the day on those workdays, offer two to three hours each subject that they need to look at proficiency on, and then during that same five, five day window, they'll be offered the opportunity to take, take the test again.
So, does each lo, school, they use the same testing coordinator, uh, testing coordinator at each of the schools that they have all through the year?
In, in some cases, the answer would be yes, others, depending on whether that, that staff member is going to be working during those workdays, the administration has worked with someone else there on staff that would act in, in the test coordinator role should they need to do so. So, this is, you know, again, if those, those teachers are working, uh, the, the principal has the authority to, to, you know, have them do whatever needs to be done during the school, during that day, but if they're taking the day off because they are optional, yeah, he, he or she has someone else designated for that role.
Okay, but if they do work, are they compensated?
Well, they're already on the clock, because they're doing a workday, so in, in that sense, the principal then can, can have them do whatever he or she needs to do.
But I mean, they're, the names are, all these names are listed, are they over, are they compensated more than...
No, there's not additional compensation over and beyond their, their day's pay.
You're right, for all these...
Correct.
But they just signed up to...
They're acknowledging that they may be needed during those days to, to, uh, to make this, these, uh, second chance testing opportunities to happen for some...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, most of them are just the third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's what I was noticing, but I, I just, um, I did say, see the word compensation, and I just didn't...
And I would tell you, that particular column, is it carryover from when the plans, you know, we, at one point, we were doing some of these outside of our workdays, so if there was additional compensation that was needed, that's where that would've come in at, it, you know, but in none of our cases that our, our schools opt to go beyond those workdays.
Uh, on, on this particular presence?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, and that is, again, that is over and beyond the summer program that, uh, Mr. Rose and Ms. McGee will be talking about in a minute, there will be additional compensation for those programs.
Okay, well, I didn't know, you know, if this was S R funds, or if that's what you guys were talking about.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for clearing that up.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. Sands? Okay. I think the second part of this would be the, uh, other summer programming, uh, Ms. McGee, or Mr. Rose?
Uh, we're looking at the summer learning opportunities, and this is a program for K-12.
Excuse me, Mr. Robertson, can we project this?
Sure.
Ms. Barker?
I just think anytime somebody's presenting, it's good to try to put it up there.
I would clear touch, this was supposed to be easy to project.
It is, we just have to give the, grant the permission.
Ms. Pam's just emailing you, uh, what's in the packet, basically, so you can bring it up there, okay.
I think going forward, this should be preloaded. I've now, we've got two monitors that are just showing us seven slides.
It is the Summer Learning Opportunities PowerPoint presentation.
I did see someone go there.
Summer Learning Opportunities.
Oh, load them for five hundred dollars. I'm just gonna make one for the house.
All right. I can just advance with that. All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, board members, thank you for your patience there. All right, so we've got a lot of different opportunities for our students this summer, and I am excited about these. Uh, some of these opportunities opened up due to, uh, the Office of Learning Recovery, and they had sent some additional funds out that we applied for, and we, we were granted those. So, I'm gonna go over some of our learning goals, uh, first, and then we'll get into the different programs that we've been afforded through the Office. First off, we wanna bridge the skill gaps in math and reading for our struggling learners, to make sure that they are prepared for the next grade level. I would like to see our iReady performance increase as we move forward. Last year, our work within iReady was extremely beneficial, um, and the resources that they gave us for programming were fantastic for moving forward. We would like to prevent learning loss, um, that we often see during our summer break, and then I do wanna make sure that we're keeping our high school students moving forward with their four-year cohort. We've done a really good job through this school year and last summer of making sure our students get the credits that they need to advance. And then, there is a new program they'll be talking about with a PRC one seventy-seven, um, that should help us with student interest in career and technical education that I'm very excited about, and then that can also be used to outline some career pathways for our middle school students. This year's funding was a little bit of a puzzle, and I want to thank Ms. Moore and Michael and Anna for helping to sort through some of this. Because as you all know, there's multiple pots of money that filter into this, and they each have different requirements. So in working with our team, we've come up with some ways to offer additional incentives for teachers to work over the summer, and I'll go over those shortly. But basically, all of these pots of money sort of play their part to build this program. So now, I'm going to student invitation, the students that we will be inviting. For K-5, any student meeting the requirements as defined in the Read to Achieve legislation. Then we're gonna look at students who have failed math or reading, and then students who may be in the bottom twenty-nine percent of their iReady performance. In grade six through eight, any students fail math and reading, and then also students in the bottom twenty-nine percent by those iReady assessments. And then in high schools, I implied earlier, students who need that credit recovery so that we can keep them moving forward. For kindergarten through fifth grade, we do want to start with a workday on June thirteenth. And then we'll have the summer learning days, June fourteenth to July first. What you will notice is that it runs one week longer than the other summer schools, that is to meet the Read to Achieve legislation. We plan to hold these at Popper Springs Elementary in Walnut Cove. The teacher day will be seven forty-five to three o'clock, and then our students will have a six-hour day, and it will include a thirty-minute time for lunch, so six and a half altogether. It will include math, reading, and science, and our primary focus will be on literacy as described under the Read to Achieve legislation. I believe it may have disconnected. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rose, if you would just go ahead and carry on, we, we have this in our.
Thank you, sir. For our middle school, we will have the workday, and then the requirement for 176 funding was a minimum of fifty hours. We will be able to achieve that by running the, the time for summer school from June fourteenth to June twenty-fourth. Last year, we had housed us at Southeastern, we would like to move that to Chestnut Grove for this year. And then it will follow the same teacher schedule and student schedule as the elementary program. The next one that I'm excited about is the Career Accelerator programming. We'd like for our middle school students to see the career pathways that we offer at the high school. Students are gonna have the chance to explore multiple career and technical pathways. What we're looking at is a ten-day learning opportunity. I'm hoping to get at least six pathways for them to explore. I'll be talking to those CTE teachers about some of the fun activities they do in class that will spark interest for our students. And then the last four days, we would like to do field trips. I'd like to have the students participate with Forsyth Tech to see some of their STEM programs one day. I'd like for them to be able to see the Transportation and Aviation Center for one day. And then we're looking at some local industry and business, one being Extreme Marketing and the other being Siemens Energy. So we'd like to have our students participate and see these companies, and we are open to expanding that out and visiting others through that process. So with those last four days, we would like to run those field trips and get them to see some local industry. So that one will follow up to the first two weeks of summer school for middle school. Then at the high school level, like I said earlier, we've done a really good job with getting the students back on track. And talking to some of our high school principals and looking at the number of students who aren't on their cohort, they have received the necessary credits and are moving forward well. We do have some students who have not been successful in courses for the fall and then the spring, and those are the ones that we'll want to focus on for this summer. I feel confident that we can do that with a two-week summer school. Last year, we did five for them to recover four credits. I believe this year, we can do two credits and keep the majority of our students on the cohort. And again, we will be focusing on getting them to be successful in the current courses that they are taking while also bridging some of the learning gaps to the next level. Because that is the primary focus of the summer bridge funding that we did receive. We also examine some of the requirements for credit recovery to try to up those requirements a little bit to make sure the students have the necessary content knowledge moving forward. Because if a student's not successful in Math One, we need to make sure they have the skills to move forward in Math Two. So, you know, when we look at credit recovery, we are kind of upping the components that are required there to determine how much time they need to be spending in the Math One content before they move into the Math Two. In terms of teacher recruitment, in discussion with the team and with Ms. Moore, we're looking at the teacher's daily rate of pay. There will be retirement calculated in with this one, which was not done last year. And then we are looking at a bonus pay structure for our teachers of a hundred dollars per week. This will serve to attract our veterans who are getting closer to retirement and our new teachers as well. We did send out the applications last week just to get a feel for the number of teachers that we have. That is due at the end of this month. So we'll be able to evaluate where we are at in the staffing needs from there. And I've been pleased with the Career Accelerator components for the teachers that have applied there. I already have multiple pathways who are wanting to be represented during that, so it's an exciting time. So that sort of encompasses everything with our summer school, with our elementary, middle, and high components, as well as the CTE that we are looking at exploring. Sonya Langford's gonna be integral in helping me to set up that 177 Career Accelerator program. But we do have the, the skeletal parts of it in place, and then we'll be fleshing that out for the remainder of this month to have everything there. Do you all have any questions for me in regards to those components?
I, I like the sound of that accelerator program. I think that's gonna be really nice to, to introduce those kids to different, different subjects maybe, or different career paths that they might could take to expose them to that. And especially excited to maybe have them tour that aviation academy at Forsyth Tech. I think that'll be very impressive for them and maybe open their eyes. That's something that most kids don't see, right? They don't know anything about it, and I think once they're exposed to it, they might think that that's, they might understand that's a, that's a pretty good career and something that's pretty exciting to them, too. So I'm excited about that.
I was real well pleased with the career fairs, too, to see the programs that were represented, Forsyth Tech, you know, having multiple programs there. And then I know moving forward, there were a couple of other departments there that also want to participate moving forward. So our, our partnership there has grown and continues to improve, and our students get a lot of opportunities because of it.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Mr. Rose?
We're gonna be able to fly a jet into Walnut Cove International and bring it to them?
Have the school board Air Force One, maybe?
Trust me, I've flown in there. You don't want anything over the size of a kite.
Once it's all ironed out as far as, you know, different pathways and, you know, career opportunities that'll be represented with this program, would you let us know?
I would, and you all would be welcome to come and actually see it hands-on this summer. I think that'd be a great opportunity.
And I'm sure you have big plans, but for like every, you know, student to be able to see this. I mean, going forward, hopefully, there'll be more opportunities with middle school.
We're looking at some career awareness programming that will have short snippets of multiple careers that are linked within those pathways, and then looking at career development plan that will follow them throughout. When we look at this program, they're wanting us to primarily focus on at-risk students. That was part of the criteria for that.
That is good. Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Just make sure we have a huge media presence because that's the stuff we need to advertise.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, maybe do a, a couple of videos and we could post those as your vis in some of these places. I think it'd be great. Ms. Messing?
I think that the middle school's a great area to present the career path because they're getting ready to go to, you know, high school, and they could see which opportunities are there at the high school so that maybe they could get a certification. And so they're a little bit more enthusiastic, I think, by eighth grade. And, you know, if they see the opportunities, instead of waiting until they get into high school and hearing their friends being in a career path that maybe they could or couldn't get in at that point. So I do think that this is a great opportunity for all the students, and that's a great place to present it, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work you've done so far.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Mr. Bryant, you have any questions?
Yeah, at, at Arredell County, you know, they have the Career and Technical School already down there. They have a big program which has, you know, the Fire Academy, nursing, all kinds of trades and stuff. And when Dr. Rice and Vaughn and I were in Raleigh at a school board dysfunction, no, it was Asheville, wasn't it?
It was Asheville.
Asheville. We talked to a gentleman that's on the school board down there, and we were invited to come and look, and we just haven't came yet. I'd like to get some of us together and go look at that. Might could get some great ideas, find what works, what doesn't work. And Mike could help us along with our career training.
Yeah, I'd be glad to go see it.
Be a good trip. Mr. Rose could buy us lunch while we were out that day. That'd be good. If he's buying lunch, you might go, too, with Dr. Rice.
I'll sign up.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Rose? Okay, thank you, Ms. Rose. Thank you for your hard work on this, too.
Yes, sir.
Great job. Discussion item C, discussion of district literacy plan. Ms. McGee?
Good morning, Board. So along with all the other things in the past Read to Achieve legislation, we had to submit a literacy intervention plan this year. This year is our practice year, quote unquote. So I will get feedback on the plan that was shared with you so that we can fine tune and tweak based on what the state is looking for within our literacy plans. So just to kind of give you a glimpse of what's in our plan, the components of the literacy intervention plan include how Stokes County schools will provide core instruction in reading for students in K-3. That's focusing on the environment, the curriculum, and the instruction. Professional development for the instructional staff as well as administration meets the components of the science, of, of the science of reading, how we assess students, our data analysis and our decision rules on what we do for our students if they are not meeting grade level standards, standard treatment protocol, which is our intervention matrix, summer reading camp and how we handle summer reading camp within our district, and then any areas of continued improvement. This is the first year that districts, our PSUs have been asked to submit a literacy plan to the Department of Public Instruction. It was part of the new legislation, SB 387. So I have included everything that we are already doing in our district. So those are the things that we are doing, and then I also put areas of improvement. And we are working closely with our Department of Public Instruction Regional Director or Regional Consultant to continue to meet the needs of our students and follow in line with what's expected from the legislation and from the Department of Public Instruction. I'm very proud of our district. We have a lot of things already wonderful going on, going on. We had a lot of things already in place that would be an expectation. So we have been communicated with that we would have feedback in May. We'll take that feedback and implement what we can and change what we can and then put the others as future goals. And it will be a tie, it will be tied to our Read to Achieve funds in the future. So if we do not submit the plan, we will not get funds. So that is the, kind of the nutshell. Obviously, the document's a lot longer than that. I will be glad to ask any, I mean, answer any questions. You will also see, starting about halfway through, where you see it breaking down, like the kindergarten phonemic awareness, and you see all of that marked out, it's because everything is already in our Stokes County intervention matrix. And so in talking with our DPI consultants, they said it was not necessary for us to redo and just put in on paper in their template what we already had in our matrix. So that's why it's done that way. So don't think I didn't fill that out or we don't have it. We do. So I just wanted to make sure to point that part out. Any questions?
Any questions, Board? Ms. Rogers, Ms. Knight, Ms., Ms. Messing?
Well, the only thing that I, I did notice going through the literacy intervention plan is that the K-5 in the vocabulary. So I was surprised to learn that we didn't teach vocabulary words like we used to years ago in our reading. And, you know, a lot of the state tests, especially in the middle school and the high school, have the vocabulary part, the big part of the test in the, you know, ACT and then the.
Right.
All that. So I was just wondering, do, in the assessment part, for the primary grades, do they not still learn the one hundred words and then the?
Okay, so that's like sight words?
Yes.
So those, that's not necessarily vocabulary. Those are just words that we recognize on sight when we read.
I didn't realize that.
Yes, so that is not, that does not follow the science of reading, that part, the sight, the flipping of the sight words. The science of reading focuses more on children learning the components of a word, the sounds that make up that word so that the children really understand what components that when you're decoding and breaking down a word make that word versus just memorizing it on sight. What research shows is that they may recognize these words on sight, but it doesn't empower them to break down the components and add them to additional words. And they don't always recognize them in reading. They recognize them to just regurgitate as they look at those words. Vocabulary is a totally different thing. Vocabulary is where you take down, take down the parts of the word, the morphology of the word, and you put those pieces together to understand what the word means, like your prefixes and your suffixes and your base and your root words, which is what we learned. And so that is, they, they focus more on understanding the whole concept of the words, not just memorizing them.
So in your assessments of K-3, are they not assessing those words anymore?
No, I mean, you do get.
Words that your kindergarten student has to know before end of kindergarten, and then all the words that they, the suggested words that have been there since.
Right, the Fry words.
Yeah, they're not, they're not.
No, that is not. It's more in context of reading, which what we call is decodable readers. And so the students are reading and recognizing those words. It doesn't mean it doesn't happen. It doesn't mean that there's not, we do have some fluency words assessments available to teachers if they feel that they need to do that. And it is, we assess vocabulary and those sight words and those phonics pieces that comes out in our DIBELS measures as well as our iReady assessment.
Well, I was trained on the DIBELS and all that when I was in Forsyth County, but we still did the, when you did the assessment. So, so if a kindergarten teacher sits down and does the assessment, they don't go over those words to see if the child knew the first twenty, the first semester, and the second twenty. So there's a hundred words that.
Right.
They don't do that anymore in first?
We are making that transition from, from, from that to the research under the phonemic awareness and the phonics skills going into the fluency and the vocabulary.
And so they don't have the vocabulary word list that they learn each week and the meanings.
No, no, and.
Basically, they're trying to, it sounds like.
They're doing it. Yes, they're doing it, but we're doing it much deeper. We're not just doing it at the sight of the word.
So in iReady, are they, is it more computer-based where they're?
And it's in context.
They read a, a passage and then they take a little test on it?
That's part of it, but that's not the only piece of iReady. There's, that's the comprehension side of it. You have the phonemic awareness side of it. You have the phonics side of it. You have the fluency side of it. So all of those parts are together.
So they're all on a computer?
Part of it, yes. The DIBELS is not. The DIBELS assessments are receptive.
And they're one-on-one?
Right, yes, ma'am. So you get both. Right. Yes, ma'am. So, you get both sides of it.
Okay, so.
Now, that, again, to say that, you know, some teachers, if they feel like they need to do a sight word list with, with their students, we ha- they have access to that, and we, um, we have a county one that is made. That if they wanted to utilize that, they, if they needed to assess a student on that, they could.
So, you do have a county one?
We do at this time.
Well, when was that taken away?
So, it's, the movement started, um, probably about three or four years ago, um, with the, with the buildup of the knowledge of the science of reading and, um, really what the brain does, that the brain actually looks at every single letter of a word, and that it decodes and it processes it and it encodes all of those types of things. So, the more that brain research has come out, the more that that's pulled back.
So, it had affected the reading scores, not knowing all those basic three hundred? Well, it's really all those words, you know, it's kindergarten, it's first grade, second grade. All those hundreds of words, like you can't point to a knot or that.
It's actually building that capacity because they're understanding all the different sounds and how they work together to make those words. So, it's actually building it. And I wish I had a quote in front of me right now that talks about.
I was just surprised when I read that, when you said Stokes County Schools has not adopted a program that
We do not have a vocabu-
Teachers vocabulary at this time.
Right, because vocabulary is, I think we're talking about two different things.
We are.
Yes, because you're talking about the high frequency words.
I am talking about high frequency, but I'm also, but you said
Yeah.
They weren't even doing the high frequency.
Yes, so, the vocabulary side of things, that's taught in context.
Right.
And so, what the research has showed, if we just give kids a list of words and try to teach them the vocabulary that goes along with that word, and we don't have a purpose, a meaningful, um, way that it comes out, like through a text that you're reading, like say I'm reading, I'm doing a novel study with my fifth grade class, that's the best way to introduce vocabulary, instead of just giving them a list of words. Because when you just give them a list of words, they know the words for that moment, and then they don't translate it.
Well, we used to give the words that went along with what you were reading.
Right, and they do-
You know, it wasn't just a list you grabbed out of the air. It actually went along with your passages.
Right.
So, that you had the vocabulary words, you knew the meaning, and then you read the passage, then you read the story.
And teachers do do that. We just don't have a specific program.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see, a program.
We do not have a purchase program.
Oh, okay.
But teachers do do exactly what you're saying. We just do not have a program
Oh, that clears that up.
I can't put something in there that we don't actually have a program for.
Okay, but, but you feel like teachers do teach the vocabulary words?
Yes, yes.
And that goes along with the passage?
With what they're reading, not just a random list of words, yes. We are looking, though, at programs that really focus on the morphology of words, which again is like your root words, your, your prefixes and suffixes.
Right, how you break the words, don't you?
That way, that we're building the skills for our kids to, um, attack, so to speak, any word that they
Well, that's great, because you know, we always want those reading scores to be high.
Absolutely.
I know you do.
Absolutely, I do.
You've had hard work, you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I hope I answered the question correctly. Okay, good.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Messick, for your insight into that. Mr. Bryant, any questions?
No, uh, I think I'm good. Ms. Messick covered it very well.
Ms. McGee, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, um, uh, discussion, uh, item D, a discussion of policy ninety-two oh five, pass management, ninety-three hundred, naming of facilities, and ninety-three hundred dash R. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, uh, on policy nine-two zero five, the change is on the second page, item C, the last two sentences. Those have been added in order to comply with, uh, regulations, state regulations, that the principal notify school staff, uh, regarding the non-scheduled use of pesticide. Ninety-three hundred, the change is there, in section one, naming of facilities. It's the very last sentence in that section. The Board of Education reserves the right to rename a school facility for such reasons as it deems to be in the best interest of the school district. If the Board were to decide in the future that a name of a building is not correct or should be modified, uh, the Board can do, can do that. In item two, that same sentence has been added as the very last sentence in that section also.
Mr. Johnson, before we move on, under the naming of the facilities, the third one down says, "Name may be in honor or memory of an individual." And then the facility may not be named for a person still living. So, in honor of is typically in context with somebody that's still breathing. So, those two seem to somewhat contradict themselves.
Well, I, I have seen it used both ways. Uh, i- i- it's
So have I. That's the reason we've got this, or I'm posing this question.
Yeah, it, I can see how you can name a facility in memory of someone, but normally what you see is in honor and memory. Because I think, to me, the word honor is, i- i- it encompasses more than just memory. We remember you for your accomplishments, but we also want to honor you or honor your memory for that. I mean, we, we can certainly modify it.
Was there any reason we need the, uh, uh, the bullet point, the facility may not be named for a person still living?
No, that's, that's certainly your, your, your option.
I'm all for removing that, because, I mean, there's areas in this county where we said, okay, this is this in honor of your multiple, multiple years of service.
Right, and I think I've, uh, you hear buildings sometimes being named of, i- i- in honor of somebody that is still living, so I don't know that we should be restricted to that, so I would like to, uh-
I mean, if somebody wants to give us a hundred million, well, you know, or
That's right.
Dr. Rice wins the lottery and he, he decides to, he wants his own high school, and he's want to pay for it. I got no problem putting his name on the front door.
Absolutely. Both sides in the back.
It'll be the, the Keisha Rice hos-
Yeah.
High School.
So, we'll just, uh, we'll just eliminate the last, uh-
Well, let's strike out that, uh-
Last bullet.
Yes.
I agree with that.
Okay.
And then the regulations for that, we changed the third bullet to it now just says, "One school board member", rather than try to prescribe a specific district for that member. And we also added the very last sentence about the authority of the Board to rename a facility.
Yeah, in case, um, I may discredit and still
I, I do think that is important, especially if we're going for a still-living person. Because if a facility was named for a living person and then something were to occur, the ability to rename it may be become very important.
I agree.
Yes.
Yep.
So, I will make the change for ninety-three hundred, and we will have these for approval at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, discussion item E, discussion of student handbook and bullying. Ms. Rose?
Yes, sir. Board members, we had done a presentation in October for you about our policies and how we handle harassment and bullying. And I want to give you an update on that, and then also talk about handbook revisions. So, first off, um, from the presentation that was shared with you all in October, I did take that and share that with all of our secondary principals. We walked through that in tremendous de- detail. Uh, we reviewed the definition and the policy for bullying. And this is a great piece for educating faculty members, parents, and students. And if you will notice, even on our form, where you can fill out anonymously, this piece is at the very top, so that parents can recognize what the definition of bullying is as well, before it is reported. And when students come to, you know, voice a concern, this is something we walk through and make sure that it meets that letter of the policy, uh, with them as well. So, secondary principals did receive the full board presentation from October. I went through that with them. And we talked about the procedure and the expectations of our district, uh, in dealing with any incident. And within this, I listed out the steps there that our principals are to follow. And in addition, I did stress to our principals, our Board's stance on bullying. And I went through our consistency, the need for consistency in our consequences, and, um, reviewed that information from the handbook with them in detail. After that, I have given you a total, uh, I extracted this from Power School for this presentation to let you know how many of the following types of offenses we have had with bullying, communicating threats, hazing, and harassment. And I gave you the breakdown there by our grade levels. And then I also listed the total number of repeat offenders. Now, more so than just the consequences, the part to me that is the most important is when that student is sitting in the principal's office. The education component that takes place right there is what will help us to prevent further incident. So, with our victims and also with our offenders, we need to educate them. Our principals sit down, go over bullying, the repercussions of bullying, what future consequences would be, and why that offense is so very wrong. When I look at the total number of repeat offenders that's listed in Power School, it shows a pretty good success rate for that education. In addition to this data, the other thing I want to share was that we do still have our anti-bullying curriculum, uh, within our middle schools. That's taken place with our sixth grade, and that was in our contract with NSITE. And again, we are trying to focus on the educational component of this. Also, I want you to know that I have sent out a Google form that I created to all of our principals and asked them to share that with their staff to get me any recommendations for handbook revisions, for things that maybe aren't working for the schools, or things that we could improve upon. I have received a couple of recommendations, but I also wanted to share that with our Board members and any recommendations that you all have. Uh, I will be putting together a committee of principals, guidance counselors, teachers to review the revisions that I receive. So, if you all have recommendations on those handbook revisions, I, I'll be happy to entertain those and take those to our committee, um, and then bring all those recommendations back to you all for approval.
Okay. I think, uh, one reason, uh, that we wanted to bring this back up in today's meeting uh, is to, uh, is just to reiterate with the, uh, uh, the administrators and staff that, that, uh, this Board does, uh, take bullying very seriously. And, um, and, you know, as Board members, we do hear reports from our community at times. And, um, I think sometimes parents feel maybe that, uh, a complaint is not handled seriously. Um, and, and we want to make sure that they understand that. And even, um, you know, I think sometimes teachers may, uh, see stuff that goes on in the hallways or in school, they hear about it, and, uh, maybe, maybe they don't want to get involved. But, uh, a lot of times for that student, uh, they're, they're the only source of justice. You know, that's the only, that's the only, uh, they don't know where to turn sometimes. And, um, if the teacher knows, uh, something's going on, if there's bullying going on, and, uh, and they don't stand up for that kid, and, and nobody else may stand up for them. So, it's, it's very important to us that, uh, we pay particular attention to it. Uh, and I know from conversations with Dr. Rice, sometimes it's a very complicated topic, right? Uh, there's, there's always two sides, and then the truth usually lies in the middle somewhere. And to try to get to that truth, uh, and I know from talking to Dr. Rice, he's done, you know, the, the, it's investigated very thoroughly. And sometimes the, uh, you know, the culprit is not the one that's complaining that they're getting bullied, uh, uh, they end up being the bully. And, uh, that turns up sometimes too. So, uh, uh, we just want to make sure that our administration and staff is taking it very seriously. Uh, if you see something, hear something, know something's going on, say something about it, uh, bring it to the attention. Uh, if, if a parent calls into the school, emails into the school, make sure we respond. Uh, we don't want to let it lie. Uh, we want to, uh, um, and I think sometimes we lose kids from school because of this. The parents get, uh, they say, you know, they're not, they're not protecting my child. You know, my child's getting picked on. You know, they're getting bullied. And they can't get any satisfaction, so they go to homeschool. They go to private school. And, uh, and I think in some cases, it does hurt our schools. So, um, um, and we may, uh, and I've talked to Dr. Rice, uh, maybe, uh, next year, to begin the school, maybe, uh, we may put out a video and, uh, let Dr. Rice do a video to each, uh, uh, one, a video to the elementary kids, uh, one to the middle school, one to the high school, maybe one to the administrators. Uh, we can show them on our, our new boards, and, um, and that way we're getting the same message across to each student, uh, a very stern message that, uh, this is not going to be tolerated. And, um, instead of relying on an individual teacher to maybe deliver a different message to each class, it will be more consistent. So, we're, I think, going to work on that and
Yes, sir.
And try to have a, a little bit more, uh, uniform message to all the classes.
Okay.
So, um, and one thing too, uh, I think we may want to discuss is, um, the, the punishment. I think the early stages of the punishment are probably okay. But I'm, uh, what I worry about it is, and it may not be an instance, but every couple of years it runs across. But, um, if, 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 if the conflict just doesn't stop, if the, if the bullying just doesn't stop, then I think at some point, I think maybe in our policy, we might need the ability to separate the two students, whether that's sending one student to a different school, okay? You know, when I was in school, if they said, okay, you've got to go home for three days, I probably wouldn't have minded that too bad, you know? I'd probably say, okay, I'll go home, ride my motorcycle. But, uh, I'm sure my dad would have had different thoughts when I walked in the door.
Yeah, once I got home, my view would have changed immensely.
Yeah, my view changed drastically too. So, uh, but today, we don't have, you know, it's different today. Um, my view would have probably been different at school. Uh, mine would have probably been looking at the floor and, uh, and, uh, a little ouch and involved in it somewhere along the way too. But, uh, that's different today too. So, uh, and I'm not proposing we do go back to that. But, um, but what does any other Board have a, uh, about maybe changing the punishment? Uh, and maybe stepping up, maybe it's, uh, the, the fourth, um, especially in the, maybe in the middle school or high school, elementary school I think would be fine. Uh, but in the middle and high school, maybe the fourth offense. Uh, or somewhere, or maybe just leave it up to, uh, whatever we think is necessary. Maybe, maybe it doesn't have to be the fourth offense. Maybe it doesn't get to the fourth offense at some point.
Think if it's-
If we need to remove the student and send them to a different, different school, uh, whether that be to a different high school, or to different, to Meadowbrook, then, uh, the way I read it now, we don't have that option. Is that correct? Is that, uh, is that, or is that always an option?
The principal can always make that recommendation. Now, i- i- the handbook, you know, are clearly defined, and that's where we get consistency from. But if there's a severe situation, especially that's resulting, ag- again, there's multiple levels of what could be considered bullying, it has to be a repeated offense. Well, if I just walk by you repeatedly and say, "I don't like you", you know, is that grounds for Meadowbrook? Now, if I start the tripping, the pushing, the, all of that, does that become grounds for Meadow? Well, yes, but, because that goes into assaultive behavior, that, then those r- regulations for going to Meadowbrook would then come into play. So, I think we have that discretion, but to add that on to here, change in placement, including Meadowbrook, would be appropriate.
Yeah, I think it, if it's, if it's on here-
Again, if it's in the bullying section, that part may stand out more if it's, if it's listed in this section.
Right. I think the students then look at it and see it, and maybe that's a part of our presentation, and it makes them think, okay, well, you know, uh, maybe I don't want to take this too far. Maybe I need to watch what's going on or whatever, but, uh, I think maybe it- Maybe I need to watch what's going on or whatever. But I think maybe it would help if we, if we did something, if we added something to it, another sentence into those offenses or in the overall topic of it. I'm not sure how we want to do that. Maybe you can work that up and bring it back to us at our next meeting and decide, you know, you and Dr. Rice can decide what's appropriate for that. But I think that would maybe help. And, and again, we just want to send a clear message that we're not going to tolerate it. And, and another thing is today, with kids today, you know, I'm old now, but when I was growing up, we didn't have cell phones. Nobody had a cellphone camera. Today, there's so many photos flying around everywhere, right? Kids think it's cool, I guess, at some, in some cases, to take photos and send them around. And I think we need to, we need to really watch that, okay? If we're, because that get, you know, when, when some of those photos are flying around school, they're breaking the law, right? And I think if we hear that that's going on, and if the teachers know that's going on with their principal, then we need to deal with it. And I don't think we're going to have to deal with it too many times before kids may think, you know, that's not too cool to send a picture, you know? I've got a, you know, I've got a, you know, one student has a picture of another student, and maybe they're in a relationship, and then they break up, and then all of a sudden, that picture's going everywhere. Well, that's maybe a revenge type of thing in some situations. And I think if those, if those cases, and I know it happens, okay? I know it happens. Everybody in here knows it happens, okay? But how many times has it been punished? I don't think we've probably ever hear of that being punished. And I don't think we're going to have to punish it too many times before students get the idea that maybe that's not such a good thing to do, okay? I mean, that's.
That could be added in the clause, including.
It is in the clause. It's in the front. It's in the first page.
Like you're saying, just a.
Photographic images. But I just don't think it were. I just don't think it were, we're punishing those, some of those offenses. You know, and luckily, as a dad of a daughter, I haven't had to deal with those. But I guarantee you, if I did, I certainly wouldn't like it. And you'd probably see me at the school.
Well, and cyberbullying is a criminal code offense as well that, you know, any parent has the right to contact the magistrate, contact the sheriff's department, and do charges on their own if they feel like they've been cyberbullied as well. And again, that needs to be part of that message as well, that while school offenses and punishments are there, it doesn't have to be limited to that. Parents do have that recourse to contact the sheriff's department or contact a magistrate with other information as well. And, I mean, again, we're eight hours a day. There's sixteen hours a day that, that we're not in control. And there's a lot of, well, half the year, one hundred and seventy-six days of school and three hundred and sixty-five days of school a year. There are other things as well that, where parents can step in and be an advocate for their child with the sheriff's department as well, and those type of offenses for cyberbullying.
I understand, and, but if it's going on at our schools, then I feel like we're a lot responsible for that too. And unfortunately, in today's society, for a lot of kids, we're, we're the safe haven.
But in most of those cases where it involves the cyberbullying, law enforcement, the SRO is contacted. And, and I can't say a hundred percent for all of them, but I will say in many cases, they are contacted for that, for that as well.
Have we had any punishments in our schools for that going on? Do you know? Have we had any, any, any kid that's been punished for sending photos around of other students this year? Have we had, has the, has anybody?
I'm not sure about this year. I have dealt with that in the past. I know. And during my time as an administrator, I mean, I've seen the State Bureau of Investigation step in and take over investigations before. You know, and it may fall under, you know, in Power School, bullying, harassment. It would fall under that policy for those type of offenses that we're talking about. But I've also watched our administrators track those type of images down and get them out as quickly as possible to protect that victim.
So, they get them out, but it is.
And they deal with it as a disciplinary issue.
Yeah.
And again, and law enforcement has been, I know it's been contacted in multiple cases of this in my six years here. I can't space, say specifically for this year, but I do know that law enforcement has run joint investigations with us in the past.
And you're right. They are complex when you get into these. And, you know, by the time we start providing that due process to the offender, there are so many other components that do come into the investigation. And I will say, our principals have been thorough. You know, I mean, they're taking the witness statements. They're running through to really try to get to the heart of the offense, issue the correct punishment, and provide the education to prevent it in the future.
At the same time, I'll say, are we perfect with this? No, we're not. There, there's some that gets through. There's some that it doesn't resolve the behavior. There's some that we don't find out about the repeat offenses, and therefore, we haven't dealt with. And maybe a child said, well, I told somebody the first time it's happened again. Why tell them? But if we don't know it's still continuing, we didn't know it wasn't resolved. And so, while you can check back up with somebody, and nothing may have happened then, maybe two days later, something does happen, and we don't find out about it. So, it's something we work on, and it's something we'll continue. And as we talked about, when we talked last week about this, you know, I brainstormed some things that maybe we could do better with the communication piece to make sure it's one message, to make sure all that stuff. So, we're, we're constantly looking to revise this and make it better. But it is a very, extremely difficult situation.
I would agree. I just think, we just want to make sure that everybody understands that it's not tolerated. We are, we, we're paying attention. And if, if administrator doesn't want to take it serious, then, then we will. And, and we'll deal with it accordingly. So, any other questions or comments from the board, Mr. Rogers?
Oh, yeah. To start with, I mean, we've had forty-one reportable offenses. Have we had any follow-up from the complaint, from the, not the, the complaint?
We've had four repeat cases.
It's not. We've got forty-one people that reported a problem. How much follow-up have we said? A week later, are you okay? Are you fine?
Ms. Cheek is the Director of Academic and Emotional Support, so somebody should be able to just ask the kid a week later, did you get resolution?
Or is it still going on?
Yeah, is it still going on?
And I don't think we do.
Or after the, after everything has been said and done, that's an emotional component that we need to follow up. Whether it be just a guidance counselor, a peer, you know, a peer or a teacher, just that the bond, that there has been an establishment of a bond, just somebody to ensure. Because that whole statement, well, I did it the first time, and nobody seemed to care, would probably go away if we showed that, yeah, we care. And if it is a false complaint, we need to get them help too, because they've got a problem. We need to supply that emotional support.
So, ironing out or fine tuning the process?
Yeah, fine.
Including.
Yeah, I mean, with the establishment of a position, just make sure our kids are well, well cared for. That, to me, is a natural pathway. And then on our, my personal opinion, on our penalty phase, I think we need to throw out number three altogether, because it says five to ten days out of suspension. And then if you do it the fourth time, then you get ten days impossible. You know, if I've done it twice and I just didn't get it on the third time, you need to go somewhere else.
Yeah.
And it may not be Meadowbrook. It may be back home. And then the parents can assume responsibility for the child's action.
I agree with you.
Take out the third or the second?
Take out the third.
Because I was kind of wondering, well, before y'all said that, I was kind of wondering about if we're going to remove one, removing the second one. And that makes one to three, and the next one, five to ten.
Well, I'm just saying, get rid of the third one, because if they've done it the third time, then they'd be gone. It's just like baseball, three strikes.
You get rid of the second, the second offense, and the third offense becomes the second. It's a, it's a, it's a more harsh punishment for the second offense. The second offense then becomes five to ten days out of school suspension instead of three to five days.
Yeah, I'm fine with striking.
Yeah, I would say strike out the second offense and move the other ones down, and then add to the fourth offense.
And I'm fine with doing it for both.
A referral to Meadowbrook.
High school and elementary.
Yeah.
A referral to Meadowbrook by D, fourth offense or third offense?
Or it depends on how severe the bullying is. I mean, I think, I think.
Meadowbrook, even on the first offense, could be an option if it's severe.
Well, if it's severe enough, the principal has the latitude.
Right.
Here's, here's one thing I look at. If, if, and it's warranted, if we catch, if we find a student out back behind the building doing drugs, what is the first offense for that, Mr. Rose? Meadowbrook?
First offense for using. They will be recommended to NSITE for their drug program. And then, once they receive that notification that they're participating, they'll receive a ten-day, ten-day, and then to Meadowbrook.
Okay.
If they're distributing, that's a different offense.
Yeah. So, so, and I'm no, and no way advocating that using drugs is okay. But if there's, if there's a kid out back smoking marijuana, they're hurting theirself, right? They have problems, and we're trying to deal with that. But we send them on over to Meadowbrook. If a kid is bullying somebody, he's not on, he's not really hurting his self. He's hurting that other student, right? And we, we give him a little suspension or her a little suspension, and they're right back into the school. So, to me, it is, it doesn't add up totally, because one, a person may be hurting theirself and causing damage to their own self and need help, and which we're trying to give them with the NSITE. But the other one, you're actually hurting somebody else. And when you're bullying somebody, you're hurting that other person, and, and maybe for years to come. Maybe they, maybe there's emotional issues there that stick with them for a long time. So, that's why I say, you know, maybe the Meadowbrook scenario doesn't have to be the third or fourth offense. Maybe that needs to be on the table for the first offense. Depends on what type of bullying it is. What, you know, what some of the history is or what they've done. So, I, I just think, I just want us to understand that the board is not, you know, we don't want to see, we don't want to, we're not tolerating it. And, and it is, we take that this is a very serious topic. And I think we do lose students to homeschooling to other schools because of this. And we're going to have to get a better handle on it. I just, I'm with Mr. Rogers. I don't think a lot of the cases may go reported. Or maybe they reported the first time, and nothing happens, and it's just, okay. I'm just going to have to take it, you know, live with it, deal with it myself, whatever.
Well, a lot of times, when they do report it, it's been going on. It's been going on enough that the child has broken down at home and told the parents. And so, it, you know, the first time the kid comes by and bullies somebody, usually they, you know, don't really say anything. But after it keeps coming back and back and back to them, then they finally tell their parents. And a lot of times, the kid will not want, not want to go to the principal. So, by the time they go to the principal, it's a bad situation.
Yes.
A lot of times.
Or even their parent. A lot of times, they don't want to tell their parent.
That's right. And so, by the time it's told and acknowledged, it's a, it's a bad situation a lot of times.
Yeah.
And then, when they investigate it, you know, I've heard of this, then they're made to feel like it was their fault. You know, what have you done to cause this person to bully you? And so, then that becomes bad feelings there. So, that's one of the reasons we have such a problem with bullying, because of the perception. And the, and the one that's being bullied, and then the one that does the bullying. So, it's a hard thing to fix, but it does need to be addressed. And especially the consequences of the person that just keeps on bullying that person for one reason or another.
Exactly. And just like Ms. Messick said, you know, by the time
That's right.
that student gets the courage to speak up to their parents or their principal or their teacher, maybe the bullying has been going on for weeks, okay? So, we're, you know, at that point, we're already past the third, fourth, and fifth offense. You know, every time that kid gets bullied, I would say that's an offense, okay? It's not maybe the, you know, we're counting the first offenses of, when they finally get up the courage to speak up, okay? We're saying, okay, well, that's his first offense. No, no, maybe not. Because maybe that bullying has been going on for weeks of the school year. And finally, the, you know, the victim has finally had enough, and they've said, I, I've got to say something. Or maybe one of their best friends says, you know, we need to, we need to speak up about this. And we've, and I've had, I had a lady, I had a mom tell me one day outside of the school when just, just a coincidental meeting between the two of us, but her daughter had got bullied. And, and it, it went on for a while before the daughter finally spoke up. But the daughter admitted that she had suicidal tendencies because of it. And she finally had to pull her out of the school and send her to another school. And, and she said she could tell that there was something wrong with her daughter. She was, you know, her, her personality had changed. And, and it was a very heartbreaking story to hear. And, and some of the ones that were bullying her were, they were best friends in elementary school. But when they got to middle school, things changed. So, those are the types, those are the types of, of reports that we just, are just heartbreaking. So, and, and, you know, I know we can't, you know, we can't always know. But if a teacher sees a change in personality in that student, maybe we need to investigate it a little bit, okay? If we see different, you know, if a, if a student's been very outgoing, good grades, and then all of a sudden, and then we've been, we're probably, we're probably discussing that with our teachers. I wouldn't be, be surprised that if we see these changes in personality and grades and all happening, then let's find out what's going on. Is it a bully? Is there a problem at home? You know, what's, what's going on with that? So.
And I agree with Mr. Rogers down here. There needs to be a follow-up.
Absolutely.
Because once all this has happened, then if you never get a phone call or the parent never gets a phone call saying, has this cleared up? It could still be going on. But, you know, how many times can you go to the principal and say, this is still going on, this is still going on? The kid won't do that. It'll be very hard to get a student
Right.
to go back to the principal over and over. I, I don't think you can get them to go back more than twice.
Yeah.
I don't.
Parents call us, you know, because we're their last resort. They feel like they're not getting things taken care of as they should be. And I know Ms. Cheek had a set of steps. What was it? Seven different programs that you, the teachers were going to. Six modules. And mental, yeah. And what was it? Not the February one was about identifying bullying and stuff, or is it March?
Well, October is bullying awareness month.
Right.
But it, it does address like bullying patterns and change in the behavior of students, and then how to follow up with that.
Yeah. Have our teachers already had that model?
Every school working at a different pace. Some of them are already finished. And some of them are still working through the models, but they, they all complete about a year.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, could you let us know how many schools have already had that particular model that addresses that issue, and how many are completed?
I can get updates on where everybody gets the module, yes, absolutely.
We appreciate that.
Okay. Mr. Rogers?
And I know we need to move on. I think the follow-up that comes through Ms. Cheek does not need to come from the principal. I mean, yeah, they can say how you're doing. But we need to have an independent third party of some type or, or some representative just to follow up, because the, the student, if they didn't feel like the principal did it adequately enough the first time, they're probably not going to report that they don't feel that back to the principal.
So, a referral process to the counselor to follow up?
Yeah, either the counselor or, or, you know, if we have somebody that's MTSS, I don't know if that's a component of that, just, huh, just following up to make sure you're, you're good. Is there anything we can do to help you? Do you feel like you got resolution?
I think that's the big component right there, the follow-up.
Yeah.
I've got notes there to add that to our procedure. And now with a full-time counselor in every school.
That should be doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And everything that you all have said, I could not agree more with. The big thing, though, that I want to reiterate is due process. Because, you know, as these complaints come forward from parents, as soon as I get that complaint, I listen very carefully and intently. And then, you know, I'm pulling up information in Power School at that same time. Then I'm calling the principal, and I'm getting the full side, because they've investigated. And I can get the extra details to help me to more fully understand that situation. And the times that I have done that. Um, and the times that I have done that, I've not had the principal say, you know, they have followed through. Now, we wanna make sure we have the consistency in the process. We will continue to reiterate the importance of this. I love the follow-through, um, because we do wanna make school as good as possible for every one of our students. And if this is going on, we want it to stop. But, you know, I do just have to say, that due process is so very important because of the two sides to each one of these situations. They are so complex and the ones that I personally have had to investigate.
Okay. So if you would, maybe just, uh, let's, uh, uh, if y'all can look at that, uh, punishment phase and, um, maybe add, add a little bit to that. And, uh, Mr. Johnson, is that, uh, does that policy, uh, or maybe get with Mr. Johnson and see if he thinks we need to have any, uh, changes to that policy, uh, it seems like it's pretty detailed, pretty strict.
It, it's very good, uh, but I do like adding something in there that says that in all cases, the superintendent has the authority to reassign students if deemed necessary-
Right.
-for the best interest-
Mm-hmm.
Of the child.
Students. So I think if we have a generalized statement to that effect.
Mm-hmm.
So if, so if it comes back before the board and they say, well, that's not in your policy, and nowhere in here says if my child is a bully, that he's gonna get sent to another school. If we put that in there, then we say, right, there it is.
Right.
Document.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the superintendent has that in here in authority, but I think if we put it in there, as you say, it puts people on notice.
Right. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you, Mr.-
Thank you.
Could I add one quick thing? I didn't really get to comment. Um, that, you know, in the piece of the presentation to students, and I'm sure it's in there, but just, you know, speak up, you know, part of that, speak up for bullying, because they're all, you know, right? Witnesses to the things that go on that that kid might not be telling mom or dad or telling their teacher. So just a comfort to speak up in someone's maybe defense that's not strong enough to speak out, anyway.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Uh, discussion item, if COVID update, Mr. Dr. Rice?
Mr. Robertson, members of the board, it's, uh, a great morning to report this. Uh, as of this morning, we have zero cases of students or staff who are out due to COVID as of seven thirty-five this morning. Uh, something may have come in here at this time, but, uh, COVID appears to be on its way out. I believe we had one student identified last week with COVID Tuesday or Wednesday, and their five days is up as of yesterday, so they should be back in school today. Um, so, again, the numbers are very low. We do have the updated on page two, uh, the masking updates from the health department. That's to let you know what is now in and out of the, the handbook, which we covered last time, but some additional information there. And then the third page, again, shows you our week last week, where we had, uh, one staff person on Monday identified. They've served, uh, their quarantine, and on Tuesday, we had one staff, or one student, and now they have finished theirs. So, the masking optional on transportation, schools, extracurricular events, uh, is greatly appreciated in nearly every situation. We do still have some that are choosing to wear those. And to my knowledge, uh, again, I was in a lot of classrooms last week. I never saw anyone picking out another student, why are you wearing this? Any, they, the people that want to wear them, wear them, and the people that don't, don't, and it seems to be working well.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
How long are we gonna have to continue voting every month to say, yeah, this is our mandate?
General statute says it must continue at least through this school.
Right, until the general assembly modifies it, yeah, over the end of the year.
Right.
Okay, just curious. All right, thank you, Dr. Rice. Uh, uh, I don't think we have anything on the action agenda, is that correct?
Uh, not at this time, we'll have personnel after close.
Okay. All right, uh, so in, uh, information and announcements, uh, Mr. Jones?
Chairman Robertson, members of the board, we do have a busy month ahead of us, but an exciting month as we celebrate and highlight a lot of really good activities and events that are taking place that involve our students in our schools. Uh, our, before we get into that, I do wanna mention our next board meeting will be held on the twenty-first. That's an evening meeting beginning at six P M. Coming down to Battle of the Books, that'll be held this week for our elementary schools. You can see on Tuesday, the March eighth, all the northern elementary schools, feeder schools will participate at Piney Grove Middle. On Thursday, all of the west district feeder schools participate at Chestnut Grove. And then on Friday, all of the south district elementary schools will participate at Southeastern. I do want to note that the elementary Battle of the Books finals will be held at Nancy Reynolds Elementary at, on March the fifteenth at nine thirty A M. Also, March the twenty-fourth is a really big day for us, as we kick off the morning in Greensboro at the P Tech Seniority Schools breakfast, recognizing Sandy Ridge Elementary. And then that evening, we'll celebrate some of our student leaders at the Business Leader of the Year Banquet at Jefferson Church of Christ at six thirty P M. If you have not RSVP'd to those yet, please see Mrs. Boljack.
So, the, uh, Business Leader of the Year banquet, or we have, do we have a table like, uh, we did last time?
We actually, I believe, have two tables thi- this year.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll, I'll, Pam, if you'll put me down, I'll be at-
I'm going to, Miss Bol, I'm going.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm going to the P Tech breakfast.
Okay. And then lastly, the Special Olympics. You'll see there is scheduled for April the fourteenth, the rain date of Friday, it should be April the twenty-ninth, not April the twentieth.
Where?
It'll be held at West Stokes High School.
April twenty-ninth.
And the rain date's on the twenty-ninth of April instead of the twentieth.
Yeah, and so also April the fourteenth.
Yeah, but the rain date.
Rain date's the twenty-ninth.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then in the rest of your packet is the fifth month PMR fundraising for information, kindergarten registration dates, which do kick off this week. And then our calendars for the rest of the school year.
Uh, one thing is, uh, on our kindergarten, um, can, can Dr. Rice or Ms. McGee, the one, speak to, uh, uh, I think when the parent enrolls their child in kindergarten in Stokes County schools, okay, um, I think at times, uh, we don't understand maybe the difference between, uh, our schools and a, a private school as far as, uh, the certification of the teachers and, uh, and that they're really are getting a great education at Stokes County schools. So, uh, does anybody wanna, uh, describe the difference in general terms of, of, uh, how good an education they're getting if you decide to send your, uh, your child to kindergarten in Stokes County schools?
And, and Ms. McGee and Ms. Jessup, feel free to, to follow up on what I'm saying. What you're saying is absolutely correct, cause our teachers are licensed, certified educators, um, in that elementary curriculum, uh, across the board for us, where, uh, I certainly am not speaking specifically about any private school specifically, because they could have their own requirements. But on the whole, private schools do not have to have teacher licensure through an accredited university. Um, it could be anyone, um, depending, they would set their own criteria for that. But our criteria is that they have to be a highly qualified, licensed, certified teacher.
And just to add to that, the professional level alone that is offered from the state, um, is not necessarily offered at the private school level unless they choose to pay for it themselves. So, that's another thing that, that can be on the professional level that constantly gets our attention. What's the best thing to watch with this?
Well, a, and that's very important, because things do change. Uh, you know, we don't use an abacus anymore, um, and people that are watching the video can Google what an abacus is, because you don't, but it used to be a major part of a school. And so, you know, I wouldn't want to go to a, a physician that went to medical school in the seventies and hasn't been back. Uh, because we do learn new research and new things that can make things better. And, and our teachers, again, are, have a lot of professional development throughout their career. As a requirement to, to maintain their teaching license is to stay with up-to-date practices and trainings.
Absolutely. So I think-
Just to throw you one more thing, I kind of, our teachers really love to throw it all out there and they're wonderful for your kids' families when they have kindergarten registration. Um, they get great, they are very warm, they're very inviting. Um, so I encourage you to go and see and see what's happening, because I think they're kind of wonderful.
Absolutely.
Kids feel like, hey, you want to go there.
Absolutely. So I think the point of, the point of that message is, is, uh, we want, uh, we want your kids signed up in Stokes County schools for kindergarten. Come give us a chance, check our schools out, I think you'll like what you see. Very professional, uh, consistently trained, a lot of support staff. Uh, so we, uh, we want, uh, we want, we want your kid, right? We want your kid in kindergarten. So, uh, thank you for that, and, uh, and if anybody, uh, has any questions, Anna McGee, Dr. Rice, uh, would be more than happy to, to talk with them and, uh, answer any questions that they have. Okay. Uh, Mr. Jones, is that all of your, uh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I think that's the end of the, uh, so I need a, uh, a motion to go into closed?
The chairman makes such motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're, uh, at this point going into closed session.